So is that what that, Joe, is that what that looks like? Is it just as little brighter?
Men can't say that.
Or does it turn colors?
I...
Was it Benson?
I don't know. I'll work and see.
Wow.
It brightened up, so I think it's probably the right time.
Yeah, we have been staring at it. We are on.
Okay. Good. All right. Calling this meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole. We're in City Council chambers. It is Tuesday, October 29th, a little bit after 7:00 P.M. The meeting will be broadcast live via YouTube. And Committee of the Whole meetings of this Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options. In informal setting, no official action is taken at these meetings. At this Committee of the Whole meeting, the following matters are scheduled. And we're going to start off with a presentation from Mylan Pushkar Health Right, update on a new building. And we have the Executive Director, Laura Jones, here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for agreeing to let me speak today. I have a couple of things I want to talk about today. I want to give you an update on the new building, which is really exciting. And I also need to talk again about harm reduction. It's time for us to rediscuss and renew that agreement. So let me start with the Scott Avenue property. These pictures are from two weeks ago, so there has been progress since then, but essentially all the walls are painted, all the walls are in. They look fabulous. The flooring is just now going down. The space is absolutely wonderful. We love it every time we're there. And I'll show you, these are not the best pictures. I am just IT unable enough to be able to get the few pictures that I got. I had to take them from another website, so... Okay, am I going? It should be one?
Isn't that registering?
Okay. Okay. Well, I can see. Yes, this is an example of what the exam rooms look like. You can see there's still, there's so much stuff in the ceiling on the ground floor and the second floor that they haven't been able to put all the tiles in yet. But this is what the exam rooms will look like when they're done. And we're very happy with them and the size of them. They're a little bit bigger than the exam rooms we have now, which is wonderful.
Oh, okay.
There we go. Okay. This is actually a, there was, there were two doors here. So this is on the third floor where the administrative offices will be, and that door is now gone, and it's a beautiful set of windows. There's a conference room on the third floor, and all the administrative offices will be up there. And then on the second floor, well, that's not the second floor, but yes, that, it's the second floor right there, but this is the new stairway that will lead from that. We have to have two ways of egress on that floor. That will be our behavioral health floor. And it is absolutely beautiful inside. And they were able to use some of the brick on the outside where they added the extra offices for behavioral health. So some of the interior offices have a beautiful brick wall in their office. So it's going to be a really nice, comfortable behavioral health space. And that's actually all the pictures I have. So we were running on time, and everything looked great. And as you know, working with March Weston and Paradigm has been wonderful. And I think the last time I talked to some of you, we were on schedule and everything was going well. And I don't think I knocked on wood hard enough because we are caught in the sale of the property next to us. So we need right-of-way from the property next to us. And the owners of that property are selling the property to Sintos, which is wonderful. They're going to be great neighbors, and they, they're already happy to be there. But unfortunately, that sale has not gone through yet. So we don't have right-of-way for electricity and sewage. And that's going to be a holdup until that sale goes through. And because of that, we don't, we don't have heat in the building. We can't lay all of the flooring without heat. And we can't hook the water up because it would freeze without heat because we're coming up to colder weather. So we are dependent on the sale of that property, and then we will very quickly have the right-of-way and be able to move forward. Unfortunately, that pushes us, in order for us to have all the inspections and occupancy and be prepared to do that, that's pushing us into January for an actual move date. At first, we thought maybe first of January, but now we're thinking that it's going to be later in January unless, for some miraculous reason, the sale goes through tomorrow and we can move forward. So that's where we are with the property. We're excited. Everybody's ready to go. We have a moving company. They delivered 150 humongous boxes to our office, which we are starting to pack up everything that we can't, that we're not using right now. And it should go well. So that's where we are. We have made every effort to try to get this done on time. And actually, they were going to do the punch list and be ready for us to take possession of the building the beginning of November. But with this delay, it's, it can't happen until the water and electric are resolved. So any questions?
I am curious.
Sure.
Have the, and forgive me, I'm just maybe out of ignorance. Have you talked to the current owners of the property for right-of-way?
Yes, all of that. The, March Weston has been working with both of them all along, but it's just the process of lawyers getting the paperwork done and the bank being prepared and all of that. So when the, when the land is under contract, the owner can't make any promises for right-of-way on that land because it's already promised to a seller, or they're unwilling to do that. I don't know if that's legally correct, but they're unwilling to do that until the purchase goes to Sintos.
It makes sense. Their, their agreement to grant an easement, probably technically.
Pedal defect. I don't know if there could be some agreement among all the parties and lenders involved, but it seems reasonable to describe it that way.
Yeah, I'm sure it was looked into. I'm just curious as it seems unfortunate.
Well, hopefully, the sale will happen quickly. It's not unusual to be, it took us nine months to sell our building, so it's not unusual for that to happen. But I think by the time we tried to do all the legal things around getting everybody together and making an easement agreement, it would, hopefully, they would have already sold it by then. So we are waiting and keeping in contact with them as much as necessary to keep pushing them forward.
What, does it create any problems for you moving out of your current space to?
We have to pay rent until March.
Okay.
So, but we want to be out much sooner than that. We, we are, you know, once we pull the trigger on packing up and getting ready to go, we need to go. So, and our, our moving company is being very flexible, but I think it will, there will come a time when they're not going to be able to be as flexible. I guess there aren't that many people moving in January. So, and we also are, you know, we have no idea what the weather is going to do either, so... There's a lot, there are some unknowns, but our goal is to be out of there by the end of January and sooner, if at all possible.
What you need to do to protect the building from cold? Is the heat able to be on, or?
No, but in the meantime, there's, there's no, the water is not turned on.
Okay.
So it's all hooked up. It's ready to be turned on. But we can't turn it on, so we have the electricity for the heat.
That's good.
So...
I mean, that's a good order of things?
Yes, yes. So I think that it's, once that sale goes through, we'll be able to move very quickly. The electric company's already on board. I mean, everybody is, MUB is on board with the sewage. We're, we're all ready. We're just waiting. So I think MUB is already doing whatever they can do without the right-of-way, so...
Anything else?
Yeah.
Were you going to discuss the other matter now, or?
Yes, yes, if that's okay.
Is that?
It won't take long.
Was expected, yeah?
It was in the email to Christine, but it wasn't, okay. So the other thing that we come up on every year is the Harm Reduction Program. And, why put this back in there? It's, it's called the Light Project, which means Living in Good Health Together. We are in community with the people that we're serving, and we are holding hope for them and encouraging them to move forward. But there's, you know, it takes time. And as I've said before, Harm Reduction is an evidence-based program. It's a public health program, and it's designed to do a number of things. One of them is to prevent infectious disease in our community. That includes HIV, Hep C, MRSA, endocarditis, a long list of illnesses that people can get from sharing syringes or using dirty needles. Even if they use their own needles more than once, you can still introduce MRSA. And it, we approach it in a comprehensive manner. We always have done that, even prior to it becoming part of the law. We see each individual individually, and every time they come, we ask them a series of questions. And that includes, are you interested in HIV or Hep C screening? Are you interested in treatment? Do you need primary care? Do you need to see a nurse tonight? Do you need wound care? Do you need help with medical or mental health referrals? Do you need SNAP benefits? HUD program housing? We, we help people fill out housing applications and SNAP applications, and we do a lot of Medicaid applications as well. It's grounded in an understanding of substance use disorder. So while sometimes looking from the outside, you might think, why are they doing that? There is an actual concerted effort to understand substance abuse and use and how it affects people and what kind of barriers and needs there are. And we also use recovery coaches, and those are folks with lived experience that have had substance use disorder at some time in their lives and have gotten into recovery and are doing well. And those folks are the people that operate the program and work with people directly. The other thing that is important to know is that Harm Reduction does not end the opioid epidemic. It, it isn't, it's a prevention of disease and focus on reducing harm as opposed to ending the epidemic. The good news is that people who attend Harm Reduction Programs are more likely to get into treatment because they have people around them. Nobody walks in the door on their first night and says, I think I'm ready for treatment. We have to develop a relationship and a rapport with them. And it's that rapport and relationship that eventually leads them to that request. In fact, most recently, we had someone who came in and said, I'm done. I've had it. This is enough. Get me into treatment. And we did that. And so that's one of the successes that we feel good about. Doesn't happen often, but when it does happen, it's a good thing. How can I, let's see if I can do this.
I was going to say the mouse.
The mouse, yeah. I want to show you a brief, very brief video that was made about our clinic. Whoop. How do I get this sound?
It's not, it's not just as simple as putting it down and not picking it back up.
It's not a choice. It's chemical imbalance.
Using words like, you know, John, you're an addict, takes away the fact that like you're somebody's son or daughter, you know, mother, father, sister, brother.
The people that we see in our Harm Reduction Program come from every walk of life. West Virginia is wild and wonderful. We have the most beautiful surroundings with mountains and gorges and rivers. We have hardworking, dedicated, resilient people.
It's a blue collar state, and, you know, blue collar people work very hard and work dangerous jobs and get hurt.
We are ground zero for the opioid epidemic.
I was prescribed, you know, large quantities of pretty serious painkillers. They pretty much just took me off of them, and I realized then, you know, what like physical addiction was. Somebody I knew, you know, turned me on to heroin real quick. And once I started doing that, it was just a downward spiral.
I was in choir. I was in youth group. I was always on the honor roll and all of this stuff. My, my older brother passed away, and my youth just went like off the rails after that.
Back when it happened with us, started with us, service.
Nothing in the community or around, I mean, with a great deal of search to even find a rehab center for our daughter. And of course, we already lost our son, and that...
You can obviously wear a DUI. Do you need any health services today, like any HIV screening, anything? Do you need any referrals to anything or anywhere? Would you like fentanyl or Xanaxi testers?
2013, 2014, we realized that the situation here in our community was more serious than we knew. Around that time, we started looking at our Hep C rates, which were increasing dramatically. And when we talked to people, it turns out that many of them told us that they had a history or were currently using IV drugs. We started providing syringe services and a whole comprehensive Harm Reduction Program. And within that first month, we had 30 clients, and in the first year, we had 300. And in the second year, we had over 1,000.
Here at Mylan Pushkar Health Right, we work really hard to build a relationship welcoming them in, sometimes even before they've made any steps, just to show like what it could be.
Eventually, through a partnership with Direct Relief and Pfizer, we were able to acquire opioid overdose reversal medication, which was a game changer.
Over the past five years, the 2.6 million doses that have been provided at no charge have gone to facilities in all U.S. states and three territories. And it's a privilege for Direct Relief to have been part of this.
I think for us at Pfizer, this particular partnership and the work that we're doing with Direct Relief is really indicative of our overall belief that everybody, everywhere deserves access to quality healthcare and medicine.
We have been able to spread that around to as many places as possible.
Like a first aid kit and just hanging everywhere so that like people can access it, and there's not stigma to it.
The opioid crisis is a public health crisis, which is why we at Pfizer feel compelled to act. If you overdose and die, you aren't available for recovery.
If it wasn't for the medication that I received, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't have had the chance to raise my children.
Opioid overdose reversal medication provides hope for people. It just gives them that other, that second chance and third chance and fourth chance, and it doesn't matter how many chances. One mistake shouldn't injure life. And if we can prevent that, or at least assist in preventing that, then it's a good thing.
So the reason we were chosen for this video is that we gave out during a two-year span of time, I'm going to figure out how to get out of here, over a two-year span of time, yeah, there we go. We gave out over 22,000 doses of opioid reversal drugs. So, which is, according to Direct Relief, the most that had been given out by any organization that was supplying those drugs. And I think that the, the general consensus is that we certainly have an opioid problem in our area and an overdose problem, but I can't imagine what it would be like if we were not providing opioid reversal drugs. So I want to talk about a couple of the myths of Harm Reduction very quickly. Obviously, everybody thinks it causes or increases drug use. This is not true. No one comes to us and says, hi, today I think I want to use, and can you give me some syringes? The people that come to our program have been using for a long time, and they are interested in taking care of themselves and reducing harm, and that's really important because that's the first step in recovery. The second thing is that it increases crime rates. And I just have to do this. So this is a look at overall crime in Morgantown compared to the U.S. average. The Harm Reduction Program, and I'm sure it's hard to see, the Harm Reduction Program started in August of 2015. The numbers actually went down for three years when we had between 2018 and 2019 over 1,300 people using our Harm Reduction Program. 2020 was COVID, 2021 was COVID, and also the year that the restrictive law was put in place for Harm Reduction. And 2022 is also not really an increase, but very consistent. And I couldn't get data for '23 and '24 yet, but it, the, the numbers actually went down during the heyday of our Harm Reduction Program. So I think it's important to know that the, there is not, or it would be difficult to make a correlation, that Harm Reduction is causing this huge increase. Let me go back one. The other thing is there's this belief that everybody who's on the street, who is houseless, is using drugs, and this is absolutely not true. And that also, that it increases syringes in the community. There will always... There will always be syringes in the community, whether we have a harm reduction program or not. We had syringes prior to, and if we quit tomorrow, you would still have syringes. The other important thing is to look at the unduplicated number of people we've seen since January through August 31st of this year. We have only 545 people in the program now. Part of that change happened when the more restrictive law went into place, but for the most part, it's not increasing. It's staying pretty steady right now. We had 1,364 visits. We had 10 referrals to treatment during that period of time, plus the one we just had a few nights ago. 30 referrals to primary care, 75 HIV screenings, 50 Hep C screenings. And this year, our total number of syringes dispensed went down to 186,580 syringes. Our returned number went up, 175,573, and our overall return rate is 94%. Last year, we were at 79. So we are feeling really good about that. We did find, our numbers are a little bit skewed because when the abandoned houses were starting to be torn down, they found quite a few syringes in some of those houses. And we went to pick those up. So we brought back, I think, more than 1,000 just from, and we didn't, we only did six buildings. So people have been living in those buildings, I think. And so we're, we are happy with the way the numbers are going. And when we start our project, so we'll need to be here until January. But when we start our project out at Tenscott Avenue, we have set up the whole entire clinic so that harm reduction is right in front and doesn't have to take place in the clinic. And we will be able, able to be open, what we expect is three days a week from eight to four or nine to four. And that would allow us, that would prevent long lines of people and everybody coming all at one time, which we would love to avoid, but it's hard. And we'll still be providing the same level of comprehensive care and following all the guidelines that the state requires. And that's, that's it. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
Laura, just, how many, so do you guys still service like the other parts of the community, like for mammograms and medicines?
Yes, absolutely. This is.
Do you still see a high, do you get a high community involvement, like for just regular healthcare?
Yes.
Because I mean, I remember back in the eighties, you know, when Joni was your.
Yes.
And, and, you know, we used to do a lot of fundraisers back in the mid-eighties. I, I know even I use your services for flu or for earaches or, I think I even got a mammogram screening there. So I was just curious, like, how much of the community uses your services not opiate or related to terms?
We have 1,000 patients specific to primary care right now. And that number grows every day. We're seeing a current increase with the unwinding of Medicaid. So we, we see Medicaid patients as well now. But because of the cost of healthcare, we only have one nurse practitioner. We do have almost, I would say, 20 or more volunteer physicians who come in once a week or once every two weeks or once a month. We now have a children's clinic for children who don't have Medicaid or aren't eligible for Medicaid or chip. We also occasionally see people who have insurance, but they are low income enough that they can't afford their deductible. You know, they might have a $5,000 deductible, which means they have to pay out of pocket for a mammogram. And there are people that we see because of that. But absolutely, we are busy every single day. We have great partnership with Bonnie's Bus. They come and do mammograms in the parking lot across the street. So all of that is still going on.
So how's prescription medicine? Do you guys still help with the costs?
We have free prescription medicine for anyone here.
They just need a prescription. So do the seniors have a program for?
The seniors.
Because I know I live around a lot of seniors and, you know, they struggle to get their medicine.
They're eligible for Part D. If they reach the donut hole, there are some medications that we can help with if they're income eligible. We are at 250% of the federal poverty level. So, and we can kind of go up to 300%, sometimes 400% for certain medications. They have different guidelines. But yes, there's, it's, I never get to talk about that part because I'm always here to talk about.
Exactly.
Harm reduction.
Because you have to have approval for this part.
Right.
No, I'm just curious. It, it seems to.
Yeah.
Because I remember, like I said, back in the eighties, that was a big deal back in the.
Eighties and nineties, yeah, yeah. Joni was, I worked with Joni until she retired and got her job.
It was a wonderful program back in the eighties. I remember very well.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we had like 8,000 clients then.
Oh, yeah. Lines were long.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Laura, what, what metrics do you measure as success? Like, is it best practice for a harm reduction program? You know, you gave a lot of stats, but what do you look at to say this is a successful harm reduction program? I mean, obviously, the medication for opioid reversal, you know, you could point to that, but what other?
The other thing is looking at whether or not there's an HIV outbreak among the people who are injecting drugs. And currently, really knock on wood, we are one of the communities that does not have that right now. And there are communities in areas, rural areas, that have never had an HIV case that are starting to see HIV. So we feel that our program is contributing to not having an HIV outbreak among drug, IV drug users. And the positive clinic at WVU would agree with that. We work very closely with them. The other metric we use is the number of people that we catch with Hep C, which is far more common in our area, and then get them into treatment. So we now provide Hep C treatment onsite on the same Friday that we have a harm reduction program. So that's another metric that we, we look at. How many people are we getting into that process and curing their Hep C?
Thank you. Did, did, I, I wasn't prepared for this, so I don't have my facts in front of me, but
Okay.
did Huntington and Charleston both discontinue the harm reduction?
No, Huntington has a harm reduction program.
They do have one in place?
They did have a, a large HIV outbreak soon after they, their community asked them to make people provide ID and only be from that county. And then Charleston also had an outbreak. They got rid of their regular harm reduction through the Health Department. And that was largely led by Dr. Gupta, who's now the National Drug Control Policy Person, who came back to West Virginia and said, I shouldn't have done that. You need more harm reduction in this state. So, yeah, they gave up their harm reduction program. They had 51 cases of HIV. And they are, they're, the free clinic in that area, Charleston, provides a very small program. We give out 180-some thousand syringes and they give out about 7,500 a year. So their, their community is in danger or at risk.
And I, I remember when that happened, but I thought I read more recently that because of the drop in the program, there was a more concerted effort to connect people to HIV testing, and there was actually a drop in HIV rates, even though they dropped the harm reduction program. Am I remembering that right in the last year or two?
Well, Charleston still has their harm reduction program through the free clinic down there, the West Virginia Health, right?
But very minimally, as you described.
But very minimally. So the question is, do we have fewer cases or are we not testing? And so there was a decrease in some of the testing, especially are we testing the population that we need to be testing? So you can set up a testing booth at the mall, but you're not going to reach the people that really need testing.
Right.
So that's one of the arguments that, yeah, it looks good, but are we really doing what needs to be done? Some of the communities that are now finding HIV cases in some of the more rural areas are, have not been testing the right people. And once they started doing that, now they're finding cases. So I think that's an ongoing issue.
Okay.
Are we, are we testing the right people?
That, that makes sense. And then just one last clarification question. For each person that, the different person you see in the clinic that's coming in for harm reduction, is it, it's about one syringe a day that they need?
No.
Because that's what the math comes out to.
No. They, so, yeah. Typically, people inject between one and five times a day. So the only thing that's different this year that was done previously is that we changed the way that we measure, we know exactly how many syringes we gave out, but we, and also people are coming in and not getting them if they don't return any. So, but we also had to change the way that we count them when they come back in. So, yeah, it's definitely more than one per person, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you tell me how people access your services?
For?
For whatever you offer, including the healthcare?
All they have to do is call and we do a telephone screening and we can set up an appointment right there on the phone if they're eligible. They have to have information about their insurance status. If they are not Medicaid eligible, they have to have a Medicaid denial letter. And they have to have basic information about their income.
How's this communicated?
Website, Facebook page, word of mouth.
Do you have other agencies giving referrals?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
And that includes?
Housing people, mental health, the hospitals, anybody who runs across someone that does not have health insurance or has Medicaid and lives somewhere downtown and can't figure out how to get somewhere outside of town to get a physician. So, yeah, we get referrals all the time.
Do other counties have needle reduction other than Charleston, Huntington, Morgantown? Fairmont, Clarksburg, Wheeling?
Fayette.
Or they?
Wheeling does, Fayette County does. Huntington, Charleston, Beckley, no, not Beckley. I'm trying to think. Mingo, Mingo County.
So Marion, Harris County, their public health departments don't do the needle or?
Marion County had one, which we helped them set up. And then when the new law came around, they don't have the kind of resources that we have to be able to do everything in that comprehensive plan. Clarksburg was the first to shut down their program. And there is still a lot of controversy around that.
Yeah, Harrison County doesn't seem to necessarily do much.
No, no. Marion County has a really great QRT team, quick response team. And on Tuesdays, we created a special time for the QRT team to bring people from Marion County to get what they need and get them back out of town quickly. And I think last year, that may have seemed like we were expanding the program, but the, the goal was to just have a small number of people coming from, I think there's QRT in Clarksburg also brings people. And they get in and they get out quickly and they're not hanging out around town.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Anytime. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura.
More questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, your USB? Can I plug in without damage? Watch out.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like to read? I think we're to our end of session.
We have to do our public portion first.
Public portion?
Pardon me. Thank you.
You know, Annie wants to say something.
I guess your eyes are going.
Yeah. All right. It's been pointed out, we need a public portion. So here we are. We are opening our public portion. If there's anyone wishing to speak, especially those in costume.
Firstly, I'd like the council to resolve that should I have a wardrobe malfunction, we'll pretend I didn't. I'm not sure what I'm doing here. I would like to put my full support behind the harm reduction program I've been looking into for years as a frequent flyer at the emergency room and surgical suites, et cetera. I've had Narcan myself. It absolutely sucks. It completely reverses whatever pain control you had. And you're in agonizing pain, but you're not dead. I spend the night in the ICU intensive care for cardiac things, but whatever. I would be dead were it not for Narcan. Since then, I've also had to, with my prescriptions, get syringes, needles, et cetera, for my vitamin B injections and the pharmacy. Always gives me so much attitude. Why do you need needles? Well, why do you need two? Because I can only inject with the little one, but I can't draw anything from the bottle with that little one and then inject it into anything after that. So I need one to begin and a little one. And this happens every three months when I get a refill. And to the best of my knowledge, I have a substance use disorder, but the stigma that goes with this is ridiculous. It's demeaning. And I think the worst thing is fantastic. And it's very important that we keep the harm reduction program. The needle exchange programs that are done by the Health Department are more degrading yet. Going to the Health Department just always itself is a depressing experience. During COVID, the person who was in charge of administering the COVID vaccinations was an anti-vaxer and refused to wear a mask and didn't tell anybody that she was exposed all day long and giving them the injections, but that's how it goes. I wouldn't want to subject anybody to that kind of mentality when they're trying to either get help or be responsible with their use in needles. But that's not why I came to talk today. I am still on my kit for affordable housing and low-income housing. They are two different things, of course. Affordable housing would be Bluegrass Village. Everybody who lives there has a job, to the best of my knowledge. There may be some who don't, but for the most part, they're employed people. They're working class housing that people can afford. They own the housing, not the lots. They lease the lots. My husband, me, he's a little engineer who does nothing but manufacture housing communities. He's brought me to too many conventions about this stuff. But we went up there and took pictures of code violations, and there are many of them. or rotaries on blocks, there is subsidence, and that person's house is going to break in half, but nobody's going to enforce the drainage. Generally speaking, this is something that is regulated by the Health Department, and when I ask them about how this licensing went, because they get the license, they did it July 1st to the new owner, and so that they passed inspection then. The pool is full of the greenest, scariest-looking water I've probably ever seen. There was one dock in it. The area to the pool is locked, but any creative kid who likes track nuisances could get in there because the pool's still full and drawn. But also mosquitoes do not pay attention to fences, and it's a breeding ground for whatever's going around this week with mosquito-borne illness. And that's one of the parts of the Health Department code is that it can't have any areas that were breeding, that's, or invite rats, so the garbage must be removed once a week. We've got photographs of the garbage that is stacked up very high. I didn't see any rats, but I wasn't looking for them. Also, they've got a pond down in front that is not fenced off, and it doesn't have any grading in it, so it's just a hole. There's also a school box, school bus stop right next to it, and no fence around the pond. One of these days, kids are going to drown in there, or maybe somebody's just walking along Green Bag Road and walks a few steps too close. This is within the city limits, and I had a meeting with code enforcement, and the attitude was disturbing, and the response to almost everything I said was, "What do you want me to do about it? It's private property." It is not that private. We go into property all the time to do mob things, check water, check gas lines. We don't get people's permission to do it necessarily, but it's what the city does it, and we have a responsibility to regulate these things. And I've been picking on Bluegrass Village because I've gotten a lot of complaints from residents that are being evicted, and the latest understanding is that they're taking out people's trailers that they've abandoned once they've been evicted because it costs $10,000 to have a single light removed and $20,000 to have double light removed, and your house is worth less than that, especially by the time they take it apart. So the property owner comes in and drags it out and puts it wherever, and they brought in, the last I heard, 14 new units with the plan to make them HUD housing. So I talked to the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority. How does this work? Oh, there's no such thing as a HUD pre-approval, so they're just winging it if they think that they're going to get HUD approval. They can have units available that they're renting, and we can give them HUD vouchers if they qualify.
So we're at the end.
But we're only helping the problem worse. We're helping get people evicted. So there are a lot of properties around Morgantown that are more suitable. Apparently, they paid $30 million for this one. There are, they're going for far less than that, but apparently, they were given some government funds. There is the lovely low-income housing tax credit, so the developers who put together some HUD housing or low-income or affordable housing get a big fat tax credit. It's not going to be $30 million, so I'm not sure what they're thinking. And still, they're going to have to rent those trailers if people won't be able to buy them with the HUD vouchers, is my guess. There's another 55-plus community in town.
So we're, yeah, we timed out.
Oh, you want me to shut up? Okay. Can I come up again?
Not in so many words, but yes.
Okay.
But appreciate your research, and feel free to send us something, or we could figure out a meeting. Is there, is there anyone else who's wishing to speak during the public portion? We're done with the public portion, and now we are on to our next item for the evening. Want to read it?
I move that pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A 4B12, we enter executive session to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
Second.
On paper?
Oh, yeah.
All right. unanimous. We're going to executive session.